This conference will now be recorded.
You got a patch, did you get a patch?
I did not get a patch.
See that awkward smile?
You stare back a little.
It's 5:30, the meeting will come to order. Roll call.
Commissioner Gengler?
Here.
Commissioner Jennings?
Present.
Commissioner Rogers?
Here.
Commissioner Warren?
Present.
Ms. Stone?
Here.
For those who have an opening there and then the Pledge of Allegiance, please join me in prayer. Father, guide us in the ways of wisdom and lead us along the straight path. The commission has some hard decisions to make. Sometimes we feel confused and struggle to find the right way forward. We try to look at big picture, not just right now. We are thankful that you fully understand how hard our journey can be. Even though we wish for easier circumstances, we believe that you can bring good out of every struggle. We will work by faith and not by sight, trusting in you to lead us along a straight path. In your great and wise name, amen.
Amen.
Now, face the flag.
There you go, ready?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good job.
Super.
You did great.
Additions or relations?
I would like to add under new business number four, the Heartland Flyer that's been mentioned before, trying to get service from Newton on the railroad tracks to, was it Newton down to Dallas, I believe, or Oklahoma City? They're wanting there have at least been discussed having one trip. Now that funding has kind of been held in place and it's not really going anywhere, they're asking that we support maybe a second trip each day. So it'd be an afternoon and an overnight trip basically with that Heartland Flyer. And so I would like to see that we approve a request to the Federal Railroad Administration to add a second connection to the Heartland Flyer extension. Basically that we support and that we're requesting that they look into it. So, okay, that sound right? I mean, that's, I read the letter, so.
You have a second?
Second.
Second, we had item number four. Is there any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion approved. Proven of the agenda.
Some move?
Second.
And moving in second that we approved the agenda. Yes. Edit two. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Proclamations? That's the place here. Kate?
Are you going to go to the podium and face the audience? And the police officers are going to come be with you.
Awesome.
Yeah, you're.
She's protected now.
Yeah. You just can peel around back if you like also. Sorry, Madam Mayor. My job. Just, just.
Whereas Congress and the President of the United States of America first doesn't even make it as peace officers and warriors and citizens to make it to our city. And whereas members of the Arkansas City Police Department are in essential role regarding their rights and freedoms to live in the heart of the city, especially during this ongoing coronavirus pandemic. And whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the problems, duties and responsibilities of their police service. And that members of our police department, or my state, deserve the people by their right and power for helping citizens against violence or disorder and protecting them against deception and rape against oppression or intimidation. And whereas Arkansas City Police Department is required to be a modern, competent and responsible agency that continually provides an essential and vital public service. Now therefore, the mayor of the Arkansas City, of the city of Arkansas City Kansas, also finds all citizens of Arkansas City to observe the week of May 14th through 20th, 2023 as National Police Week. Arkansas City with a drop in its families in which all of our people may join in. The. As any of us who buy their physical and money, especially to their responsibilities and their and dedicated service to their communities and in doing so have established for themselves an inherent obligation for preserving the rights and security of all citizens. I therefore call upon all citizens of Arkansas City to observe May, where they may visit the practical area to be offensive and immoral. And I'm aware of those who are in work in offices in areas of emergency amongst their lives or became disabled and.
Chief? Chief Burr?
How do you do?
This is for you to present. You want to present it to your former please?
Thank you guys for all you guys do.
Yeah, thank you.
Emergency medical services are a vital public need. And whereas the members of the emergency medical services team are ready to provide life care to those any 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas access to quality emergency care to improve both survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. And whereas the emergency medical services have grown to fill the gap of body and portion of hospital care, including preventive medicine, follow-up care and access to telemedicine. And whereas the emergency medical services system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, firefighters, police officers, dispatchers, educators, administrators, pre-hospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, train members of the public and other hospital medical care providers. And whereas the members of the emergency medical services teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their nursing skill. And whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value of, value and accomplishments of emergency medical services. By design, National EMS Week, which was first offered in 1984 by President Gerald Ford. Now therefore, the mayor of the city of Arkansas City Kansas does hereby proclaim the week of May 21st to 27th, 2023 as National EMS Week in Arkansas City and encourage the community to observe this week with appropriate programs, ceremonies and activities to recognize its unique theme, EMS where emergency care begins.
She's coming around.
You probably like to test me.
And once again, the young people wore from the one-room schoolhouse today. Consent agenda?
Make a motion, we approve the agenda. Or the consent agenda, I should say.
Second.
Moving in second, we approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? And then all say, in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. New business?
Item number one, consider approving a request from SCK Health for release of funds from the unfledged healthcare sales tax fund from the Arkansas City Kansas, city of Arkansas City Kansas, amount of $68,893.3.
Well, this is just a routine request from the hospital, requesting all available funds.
So I'll make a motion, we approve the request from SCK Health for the release of funds from the unfledged healthcare sales tax fund from the city of Arkansas City in the amount of $68,893.3.
Also, I could.
And it's been moved and seconded. No further discussion.
Okay, just clarify again, the purpose of the release of funds to the hospital?
So they turned in uncompensated care. That's what they're wanting reimbursed for.
And, and, and again, for my edification and for maybe some others in the community, is that amount what's available? Or is that amount what they're? And, what, say that again?
Uncompensated.
Uncompensated care totals to?
This is the cash balance I have available for.
Okay. So, so does that suggest that there are likely additional uncompensated funds? Do we just carry those over until the next time there's an amount in there?
Yes.
Okay.
Until there's an amount, or I guess until they request it again?
Yeah, they have to request it.
Is there, and is there, I mean, is there process flow? Is there like every quarter they redo this? Or just whenever they see fit?
Yeah, just whenever they see fit, I think.
Okay. And, well, and again, I'm sorry. That, we're saying uncompensated. They, these are like uninsured.
Charity care.
I think they label it as charity.
Or bad debt. But it would be charity care, uninsured. Whatever else would fall on that.
Okay, say that first part again.
I believe it includes their bad debt.
Okay.
People who haven't paid.
So, so people who have maybe like a copay amount and they haven't paid. But, so now.
Or uninsured people.
It's for, it's for uncompensated care, for uninsured and those that are charity care.
Okay, okay. All right, well, so then, so then if they're, if, as, if we effectively reimburse them those, those setbacks, then those don't end up, they don't end up turning any of those over to collections?
Nope.
They just are gone away.
Right.
So the hospital is satisfied with whatever that amount is
Yes.
for those debts.
Yep.
But, but if there, but if we were in excess of what the funds were available now, we can suppose that that would just be carried over to a future period?
Yes. So carry it, if there, there's almost always more charity care and uncompensated care than there is money. Take care of it, I think.
There's a page in your packet. SCK Health at the top. That's the report she gives me. And she has outlined at the very bottom how much is remaining. And charity care that they have not collected.
Right.
Right.
Yeah, we do, we don't collect on charity care or the uncompensated when they know that it's not able to be collected upon. So those just go away.
So we have 90,000 remaining?
That's how much she's still holding to be able to request when funds available.
And it adds up weekly.
Well, no doubt, I'm, I'm, I'm just trying to clarify what the process is. We kind of just presented it said, do you have a motion, second? But I just want to clarify that there's a process flow to this. And there's a method to the madness. In case anybody's listening and is curious. Thank you.
Further discussion? No, proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same thing. Motion carried. Number two?
I approve a request from Lena Helms from Skin Stations to waive age restriction at the Aggris Business Building during the 30th anniversary celebration event on October 7th, 2023. Of course you. She's actually here to talk with you about this. I put this item under as mine as well.
Hello?
Please state your name and address, please.
I'm Lena Helms, 1424 North A, Arkansas City.
Thank you.
So I'm here on behalf of Skin Stations and my personal business, Helms Marketing and Events. I'm coordinating the 30th anniversary event for Mike Shea for the 30th anniversary. And we have decided on the Aggris Business Building for the location, he wanted to have some old cars there and also a concert food truck to celebrate how successful his business has been over the years in Arkansas City. And that does include alcohol. I'm aware that alcohol is normally something that is voted on. So that's why I'm here. We will have the area section off and we will be taking IDs and wristbanding those who are 21 and giving a different X on the hand of those who are not 21. So I'm looking just to see if that would be open?
So the area will be sectioned off?
Absolutely.
Okay, so they, and the young people have other activities that they can do.
Sure, yeah, they can pop in water.
And then Jeff C. Becko is a licensed caterer with the state and I will be able to license him.
Okay.
Motion? Hold on, please.
Well, you can do it before or after. We get these periodically. We have an ordinance that imposes restrictions and then, but it seems that there's a significant frequency of requests for people who want to waive that rule. Does it make more sense to do these on a case-by-case basis? Or do we just need to look at the policy in general? And since, since, since it seems like generally speaking, if someone requests it, we approve it anyway. So if our disposition is we're going to approve it.
Not always, we didn't, well, for the tally markets.
Correct, and that's why I said the general disposition. When I say general dis, that means we tend to do it more often than we say no.
Yes.
So, so if we're, if we're, if we're leaning towards accommodating these requests with a greater frequency, do we need to look at the policy in general and just maybe have a form that they can fill out with some checkboxes that mean, say they meet the criterion for it? Or do we, do we need to do every one of these? What's?
Yeah. That, that would be something I think we could probably do is, if there's certain things that you guys are always saying, if you do this, we approve it. Then maybe that's some things that we could do at staff level to, to put out there and that they agree to do certain things that you're going to ask them to do anyway. And then just, you know, not need to come before the commission every time. And, you know, the alcohol laws have changed a lot in the last few years from the state level. They've made a lot of changes. It may be good for us to take a, take a step back and look at our, our alcohol beverage ordinances at the city level and see if we're still in line with what, you know, the state allows now and what's maybe more the norm out there too, if you're interested in that, so.
I, for me personally, I don't think it's a hardship to come and present to the commission. I think that's just as important. But, you know, my biggest concern individually is just that the kids have activities that they can do and they're not in a situation where they don't have anything to do but watch somebody drink.
Absolutely, there will be live music and food as well.
Yeah.
Running around, I guess, those kids do.
For clarification, there, there was no intent or, or directive towards hardship. It just seemed like a process improvement, a potential process improvement. If we have several organizations who come, they don't necessarily say, well, this, we can't do alcohol because it's a city-owned facility. They want an exception to that. So perhaps because of the frequency of it, we ought to at least have a discuss, my thoughts, I'm sorry, that we ought at least have a discussion about whether or not we can refine the process and let it be a staff matter rather than a government.
I think that's, I mean, saves us from having to do it every time. If there's something on that staff list that doesn't meet and they still want to push it, then I will put on the agenda and let the city vote it through. The staff can bring it to us. Bring it in, say, hey, they want to do it. They can't meet this quite criteria on this for the future. Then yeah, then bring it to us.
Well, maybe have Randy and, or, the attorney bring it to the workstation so we can kind of mull it over and discuss it. You know, some, or just draw up something and then we can kind of take it from there and, you know, modify it or whatever.
You're probably correct, we need to look into.
Clearly, they were wanting me to ask them to do more works. Anyway.
I think that's what we have here, though. We had a policy and now we have exceptions to that here. If we draw another policy, there'll be other exceptions that'll have to come before you. But maybe the policy needs to be a little broader.
That's what I'm saying.
That's where we get. There may be fewer come before us.
Yeah.
But whatever we draw up, there'll be somebody that's going to ask.
Okay.
Outside the policy, so.
Like, this was, this was a private event that didn't, wasn't open to the public. It was invitation only, that she wouldn't even be here because it would be in allowable. But where they're, it's open to the public, her, you know, not by invitation only, then that changes kind of the criteria. But so, if it was totally private, there could be kids running around, it wouldn't, the way we're, have it written, it wouldn't matter. But they could still do it. But, well, I think it does have 21 in there, doesn't it, on the?
Yes.
But it's, but it, yeah, so it does make a little bit of difference. So we could, we're looking at broadening it, yeah. Well, that being said, I make a motion to approve the request for Lena Helms with skin cessation to waive the age restriction at Aggris Business Building during the, her 30th annual celebration event on October 7th, 2023.
I'll second that with the guarantee that she mentioned that it's going to be designated fenced area and all that, that was mentioned in the discussion, so.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed?
No.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lena? Nate?
Good to see you.
No, no.
Burr, do you attend things like when there's alcohol on city property? Is that something that you guys are notified of?
Talk to law, we have personnel.
Right. Right.
But depending on the situation with, you said, maybe fenced off, nobody under a certain age goes into that area. I feel a lot more confident with that. I might reach out to Lena and get that date and time. Probably have officers do walkthroughs just to spot check, to make sure that they're complying with what they're telling you.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thanks, chief.
And does it have a site in that?
Oh, I'll get one. She said somewhere in the building, she wasn't sure yet.
A follow-up, follow-up to the chief. So we have someone who operates outside of the parameters defined as such. Do we flag them so that they, are they, are they on a like a restricted list for a time or banned for a time or whatever? If they.
That would have to be something that would maybe be addressed through the ordinance. But I know that if we find a violation of some type, we would probably have the ability to shut that, maybe that particular part of the event down, depending on what the offense was. But we would definitely look at something like that to, to be able to see if, if, if she was to come forward the next year after having a violation, to be able to bring it to the commission's attention that there was a violation the last time.
Okay, and I, I don't think that she still have that problem with the young lady in skin, skin stations.
Anyway, I don't. But she thought all her things in the past, we never really had any problems, yeah, we, I mean.
No, we, just over the last, you know, since, since I took over the last two and a half years, we've had plenty of opportunities where we've, we've approved alcohol sales. We've approved for even young people to be maybe in the same area where there, where there is alcohol, monitor that very closely and we've just not had any issues or problems. My favorite part when people come and consent and give the permission to do that, they're following through.
Item number three?
A resolution authorizing the city of Arkansas City to execute an agreement with Gordon CPA LLC for the provisions of audit services for years ending December 31st, 2023, 2024, 2025, 2026, and 2027. So it's our standard practice to bid out auditing services in five-year increments. So I did that, I sent out 23 RFPs and received four back. So the bid tabs are in your packet. And after lengthy discussions and meetings with staff, we just like to recommend this to Gordon CPA. He was a current auditor.
We've worked with them before, they know our history, they know how we do it. You've worked with them. So, I mean, not starting new is always a nice thing to not have to change all that, so. The fees seem reasonable too, so. With that being said, I'd like to make a motion that we, that we approve a resolution authorizing the city of Arkansas City to execute an agreement with Gordon CPA LLC for the provision of audit services for the years ending in December 31st of 2023, 2024, 2025, 2026, and 2027.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Same room? Proceed, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Item four, that new Heartland Flyer extension.
I approve a request for the Federal Railroad Administration to add a second connection to the Heartland Flyer extension.
Obviously cited to the agenda, but, I mean, I think it's just a neat, you know, they get a second pass and it's not an overnight when they come here at four or five in the afternoon. I think it's what the letter had said. I mean, that's, you know, visibility for our community, a chance for people to come here and a chance for our citizens to not have to worry about just the overnight trip.
That being said, I make that motion, but I don't have the thing to make.
Okay, yeah, that's what I was, what, what motion are we being asked to?
To approve a letter request that we will send in.
Letter of support.
Letter of support to the federal railroad, so.
Federal railroad.
Again. Your support.
Just wanted to clarify. Yeah, just a letter of support, we're not funding it, yeah. So, that would be just an overnight trip there, that happened between four and five theoretically, but the plan, what the plan is now.
Again, this, I'm sorry, I'm being a little bit pedantic here, but I just wanted to clarify what we're approving.
Yes.
In the event that.
A letter of support.
Listening in, that they're saying, hey, they're going to pay for the Heartland Flyer. No, we're just saying we support.
A letter of support.
Think it is, yeah, thank you, thank you, sir.
I will second Jay's motion. Oh, you can second, oh, you're good.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.
In size worded motion, so just like, what are we moving?
Items for discussion by the commission? Let's, I, John, at neck at our workstation. I've been driving around town and seeing an awful lot of dead trees. I've been driving around town and see an awful lot of dead trees and I asked him to look into a grant to see if we could help people that are on fixed incomes if they have to take the trees down because I know we've got a new compliance type person coming on staff for the summer. It'll be driving around saying, you got to mow your lawn, you got to do this, you got to do that. And I'm sure trees is going to be one of the things on the list. So I'm in hopes that we can find some sort of help for those who might need it because I was I had to have a tree taken out and it was over a thousand dollars. We come to find out the tree wasn't dead after they cut it down. So.
I'll follow up with him. He's in school today and tomorrow, but when he gets back Thursday, oh. See where he's at on that.
Along those lines, because you're, I think you're making reference to like on the the property owners.
The property.
The burden of the property owners.
Yes.
But of course, we are tree city for how many consecutive years now? And if you're tree city for long enough, what you end up having is trees that extend over the traffic ways. We did have, I was really, I should have said that earlier, really proud of the staff response. I was moving along one of our city streets and I saw with the breeze this free swinging limb and I stopped like Moses and said, let me see what this is. And it actually was a branch that about a dead portion of that had broke off and it was just suspended like a little branch it was. And I said, hey, we need to get that because that looks like something that with the right set of circumstances might fall on top of somebody's vehicle passing by, pedestrian passing by, that type of thing. So so there's there's an element of that that says we maybe even as we're looking at those things. Evaluating whether or not there are things that are hazards to public traffic ways. Just my thought.
Anyone else? Do you have comments from the audience?
One has signed up.
You're up, Randy.
Okay, so just a few updates. So on Tuesday, the ninth, Matt and I met with Cox about the Wi-Fi grant, so that's still, so we move along. There's not any, the grant information isn't out there yet to know exactly what the the application's for, so we're working through it, though. On the tenth, this past Wednesday, Rod, Tommy, Spencer, Nick and I, we went to K D H and E. There was a, we're going to have a need to bypass the wastewater treatment plant for a day or two when we install the RV or the UV disinfectant system. And so we were working with K D H to 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 find a time that they'd allow us to do that and then the parameters. So I think we've got a plan worked out. We're going to submit through our engineer, our proposal and how we'll do it and how how it will all kind of pull together and be limited. And so that that day, they sounded like they would approve that, but we just got to get it right into them. So that's where that's at. If for some reason that doesn't happen, we're probably going to be after Memorial Day before they'll allow us to bypass and install equipment. But we're trying to avoid that. On Friday, this past Friday, we did our final walkthrough on the alley and sewer project over here and it's finished off and it's turned been turned over to us. So I think everything turned out pretty well and it's just a few little little things on the punch list that they had to knock off Friday afternoon. So hopefully that'll give many, many years of service service, but hopefully none of us will worry about it. Then yesterday, Tony, Nick, Connie and I met with some passionate pickleballers. They're going to want to come visit with you guys about some potential ideas for pickleball courts. So we'll be working with them to to when they do come to you, there'll be hopefully some some good ideas that are achievable and and it's it's a really big thing. I happen to live with a pickleball net right now and so I know there's a lot of passion for it and and it's multi generational. It's kind of a big growing thing. I mean, that's why you're seeing companies like Chicken and Pickle and places, other places actually building businesses around it. So so anyway, I just want to kind of prewarn you that'll be a conversation coming at you soon. The I'm going to remind you too that because I just kind of keep it on the that we're still working. The TEEP study, so the traffic study around the schools, the draft, the draft to study is finished and it's at K dot right now. So we're waiting on K dot to to review it and give us their comments or approval on that. So it's still slowly moving forward. I just want to make sure everybody remembers that. The Fifteenth Street Bridge, it's gone now and they were driving some piling this afternoon over there, so it's it's going, so it's it's in progress. And the C clip mill and overlay on Madison, I haven't heard any difference, so I'm assuming it's still on schedule, just like they told us the last month, so.
What about tight bike trail?
Oh, yes. So that's Chris updated me on that Friday when we were doing the walkthrough over here. He did get the latest the latest information to K dot. They acknowledge receiving it. So hopefully we'll hook it back on that pretty soon and we're still hoping for maybe a late summer, early fall, start date on that.
I don't know. Once we start, I don't know what that take to do all that, you know?
I don't know that. That'd be part of the bid process and but I wouldn't think it would, I wouldn't think it'd be a long process. It's really kind of sidewalks and it's in right of ways that are there and it's I don't think it would take too long, but I don't have a.
One question. Chief or Jim, how's the side by side issuance coming? Are we adding more vehicles that can qualify for it or?
Yeah, I did my seventeenth inspection today. So it's it's just checking right along, trying to catch up with the officiation. By the time I'm done with the current rounds, we'll be over.
Okay. Okay. I had a lady that came up and said, they said golf carts could be allowed. So, well, they didn't.
The other question I have. There are an awful lot of them out there that are traveling around that are not registered in my area.
So I can help the officers know to do some enforcement in that area?
Yeah.
And then just a reminder that the financial summaries are on the last page and look at that.
Just curious, can I? Mentioned the ball. Advocacy coming forward at some point. Would that be something also that would be where they might want to touch base that the group of people that are coming together on the quality of life issues and the rec stuff and all of those things? I don't know what if there's a regularity or what with the meetings on that, but something where they could look at, you know, how those amenities would fit into the overall plan with.
I think, yeah, I think right now that that process is a little higher level than the actual amenities, but it's it's that's kind of coming into that. You're you're on the communication side of that, so. But that that's kind of where this is heading now with the surveying is kind of coming down to to wood pickleball being an item that's part of that or, you know. So am I correct in that? Yeah.
Yeah, I think so. And that deadline for the second survey is the night this Friday. So we have the the results, we kind of looked those over and then we're just kind of trying to filter through those and trying to make sure we're specifically where we need to be.
I was kind of sad. I was hoping I would get the prize for being the first respondent to the second survey. I missed it, obviously.
Float the idea to.
So it would be an outdoor?
Yeah, so currently they they they're playing inside the recreation building.
Yeah.
And so but during the summer months, of course, you know, it's hot in there and they would rather play outside. And so they would they're looking to have a better outdoor opportunity here.
I think Winfield's got two courts that are outdoor and it's, I mean, they're kind of on sale. There's some lights that people can play at night. I mean, they're they're smaller tennis courts. Yeah.
I mean, they're not real big, they're not.
Yeah, so one of the ideas would be Wilson Park, you know, there's the there is the that money in the Friends of Wilson Park fund over there right now that right now is just beginning to eat up with fees for sitting there. So that may be a a place that that could be used, so. But there's, you know, and I think they're willing to do some some fundraising and things as well.
There's some, I mean, there's some standalone ground too that they may want, I mean.
Yeah.
Might be a through a rec share program.
Well, no, they're kind of their own little thing. They just happen to use the rec center facility.
Well, they ought to be, you know, ought to go through the rec center program like, you know, where you have, you know. Just like the skateboard did way back when, you know, they went through the rec center and they were kind of managed to, you know. You know, you got to have somebody that, you know, in case people die off or leave or whatever, you know, then it sits there, you know.
Yeah, so I I can find out more about that and and I'm sure they can definitely provide a lot more detail.
I think they're what the organizational goal isn't so much just keeping, I think it's just getting pickleball here right now.
Yeah.
And getting some outdoor places to play and some new places to play that are open to the public and not just in the rec center during certain hours and stuff.
And they're and they are and they are some Winfield folks coming over here and playing with them and they're going over and playing. I mean, it's really kind of a a bigger community and.
Regional, I mean.
It's a growing sport.
Countywide, yeah.
Basically a growing sport for that's all for people.
Well.
A lot of young people love it. Tell me not yet.
I went out and to Nibbler Pond, the young gentleman did his Eagle Scout project and got it in the ground and thanked Corky Jones for being there and and helping do that. But there were disc golfers out there. That is just wicked sport because, hey, I mean, they whizzed that frisbee. I never even saw it. You heard it hit, but didn't see it. And so I think that's growing too. I think they're really enjoying what we allowed them to put that up there, so. Bring on the pickleball.
That being said, I'll make a motion adjourned. I second it.
Seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.